Go ahead.
Meeting called to order. Today is December 18th. It is now 7:23 PM. Town council meeting, the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Yeah.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Recognition of Brian Getz, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
I want to close. Close.
I'm sorry.
Under section 42-46-4 and 42-46-5A1 of Rhode Island general laws, the town council will close the executive session that took place on Tuesday, December 18th, that discussed the potential candidates for the position of the police chief.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Recognition of Brian Getz, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Chief?
Not yet.
With the microphone or can I boom it without?
You can hear loud enough. So just quickly before Major Knott, for those that aren't aware, and I'm sure most of you are, there was an awful fire on December 8th on the corner of Archibald and Carson Street. Three families were affected. I've met with two of them personally. And it's awful at any time of year, but especially right before Christmas. One of the families literally had just moved in like the week before. But it could have been much, much worse if not for the heroics of Patrolman Brian Getz. So I'm going to pass it over to Major Knott.
Sergeant, can I ask, Walter Getz, do join me? While he comes up, just as one of the police administrators, I think I can speak to the handful of us that we're honored to come to work every day to work with the men and women of the police department who we think do an excellent job under sometimes difficult circumstances. But we're proud to do that. And I think most of them believe it's a respectable profession and work hard. But it's especially rewarding in times like this when some of our younger officers actually step up and do something which for most people is kind of above and beyond the call of duty. For many of us, you know, I think most of us wouldn't hesitate to do the same thing. But for this young man who is just a year on the job, it's remarkable to have that burst of energy at 2:20 in the morning. So I'm going to read the email that his boss, Captain McConaughey, sent to the awards committee, which consists of our command staff. To the awards committee from Captain McConaughey, recommendation for accommodation award for Patrolman Getz for incident number 18-24850F. As you are all aware, on 12/8/19 at 2:20 AM, there was a fire which engulfed the multi-unit apartment building at 24 Person Street. While on routine patrol and in the course of checking his area of assignment in post two, Patrolman Getz located an apartment engulfed in flames. He immediately notified headquarters. Disregarding his own safety, he entered the building and began evacuating tents. He then ran behind the building and located several other displaced tenants. Due to the frigid weather conditions, he began securing placement of the tents in the rear of several patrol cruisers. Sergeant sprayed Patrolman's coil. Blake and Williams arrived on scene to assist and continued evacuation of surrounding buildings. All officers displayed calm and courage under these difficult circumstances. The scene was secured and managed efficiently. All officers should be recognized for their professional actions. Clearly, the actions taken by Patrolman Getz resulted in the prevention of the loss of life. Based on the circumstances that night and Patrolman Getz's immediate actions, I proudly recommend him for departmental accommodation. That was sent to our awards committee, who voted unanimously to award that citation. The citation reads, and I'll leave out the specifics again, but commendation awarded to Patrolman Brian L. Getz for exceptional performance of police duties. Your actions bring credit to yourself as well as the entire West Warwick Police Department. Coming with that award in addition to the certificate is our awards ribbon and a complimentary day off, which is well deserved.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Naray, representative-elect. I have with me this evening Representative Patricia Surpah and Representative-elect James Jackson. We too are here to recognize the exemplary actions of this officer. Brian Getz, this is a citation from the House of Representatives that is for you for your quick response and going above and beyond the call of duty in helping to save the lives of four people involved in a multifamily fire in the early morning hours of December 8th, 2018. Congratulations, and I applaud your duty.
We're not done. We're just going to do this all night. Patrolman Brian Getz, whereas Brian Getz in his first year as a patrolman for the West Warwick Police Department and on duty in Arctic on Saturday, December 8th, 2018, observed flames coming from a Carson Street multifamily home. And whereas Patrolman Getz located the source of the flames and reported the structure fire to dispatch, calmly assessing the scene as he woke many sleeping residents and initiated an orderly evacuation until fire and backup police arrived. And whereas Patrolman Getz be commended for his swift actions while putting himself in harm's way to save lives of others. And now therefore, the town council of West Warwick is honored to extend their appreciation and gratitude to Patrolman Brian L. Getz for his selfless and heroic actions. Great work. Now you get a day off too.
You get to speak. Nice job. Congratulations.
And thank you to everyone who did respond to that fire, including the Fire Department, who did a phenomenal job in keeping the house that was literally less than 15 feet away next door from spreading and not affecting those families also. Thank you for Chief Verone and his department for keeping us informed the next day. And again, and the Police Department for keeping us informed. It was something that we all woke up to, whether it was a text message, because we get the fire texts. Again, we know that police and fire put themselves in harm's way every day. And thank you for everything you do.
And also to the community, they reached out like enormously that next day. I talked to Chief Verone that next morning. And we reached out to a local business to be a spot for people to give their donations. And one of the families we were able to contact quicker, the one with the two adults and the three children, we were able to get them $1,000 in cash and gift cards within one day of people just coming out that day. I finally connected with the second family tonight. We were also able to get a donation from the Lions Club. They ended up donating $500 each to each family. So as awful as the situation is, I think it was awesome to see the community come together, especially for this family that had been here for a week. They weren't from Rhode Island. They've been here for a week. And to see the community come together is what West Warwick really is all about, not some of the negativity that we see out there. So great work to the community of West Warwick.
Thank you.
Sewer use appeals abatement resolved that the following abatement is hereby granted per recommendation from the Sewer Use Appeals Board and presented by the Director of Administration of Wastewater Treatment Facility for approval by the town council. Original list is on file in the office of the Director of Administration of the Wastewater Treatment Facility, Ms. Deborah L. Chauvin, 9 Brook Street, West Warwick, flat 20, lot 470, abatement $350.80.
Move the resolution.
I'll second.
Moving second, discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Minutes of previous meeting resolved that the minutes of the December 4th town council meeting are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution.
Moving second, discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda's license application resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to property departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution?
Accuse myself.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Councilman Messier recused himself. Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda correspondence resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to property departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Theatrical performances, shows, and exhibitions previously tabled resolved. Notice has been sent to the abutting property owners. The following application is hereby approved. 721 Quaker Lane LLC DBA, Condesa Attention Route Roberto Leon, location 721 Quaker Lane.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to take this off the table.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
So this was tabled because at the last meeting, there was not a representative here from Condesa, and I was concerned because of the veterinarian clinic next door to the restaurant. I did speak to the owner sense, and he assured me that this would be an unamplified acoustic style music. There shouldn't be any effect outside of the building. So I'm good with that.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Town council acting as a liquor commission. Class B Victuwing Limited Liquor License resolved that the following application for a limited B, a class B limited Victuwing Liquor License, having advertised in accordance with law for hearing on this date, no remonstrance or objector is present, the same is hereby approved. Masala LLC DBA Masala Indian Cuisine, 35 Quaker Lane, Unit 1, West Warwick, Rhode Island, 02893.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Class B Victuwing Liquor License. Resolved the following application for a class B Victuwing Liquor License, having been advertised in accordance with law for hearing on this date, no remonstrance or objector is present, the same is hereby approved. Dennis J. Calicchio, DBA Deborah's Taverns, 826 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island, 02893.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? I did speak to Mr. Calicchio over the weekend, because he had another issue going on. But I was talking to him about this. This is the old Eagles building, if anybody's familiar with it. He's looking to make it kind of like a come-along-in style, little luncheons and also parties or whatever else it may be over there. Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Town council acting as town council. Contributions for nonprofits resolved that the town council hereby makes the following contribution to the following nonprofit for disbursement of funds. West Warwick Steelers, $100. I'll explain that this was passed in July and it was supposed to-
We could talk about that on the discussion.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Moving second, discussion? Mary Ann?
This was passed in July and was supposed to be put on the August 7th agenda. It got passed us. And when we realized we had made the mistake, I told Paula she had to still put it on the agenda. It was approved under discussion action. So that's all this is.
We'll have to honor it. We approved it back then, so we'll honor it. Any questions? Any public comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Appointments for the West Warwick Technology Committee resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the West Warwick Technology Committee for the town of West Warwick with a term to expire 12/31/22.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
I'd like to move the name of Keith Lee.
Is this for three spots?
I'm going to do all separate.
There's three.
You can move all three names.
Can I move all three? Okay, I'd like to move the names-
These are all reappointments, correct?
I'd like to move the names of Keith-
Nobody, nobody else, I'm sorry, nobody else did apply except for those three.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to move the names of Keith Lee, Mark Knott, and John Patello.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
I'm for it. I think anybody who, any reappointment, unless there's some type of an issue, then let's go forward with it.
I would agree that you reappoint if there are no issues. Keith Lee is currently the interim chair. He's doing an excellent job. Of course, Mark Knott and John Patello. Major Knott serves on the Police Department, and John Patello serves on the Fire Department. And they bring their technical expertise from both of those areas to the board.
Is that full now, if that can be checked?
I think so.
We can double check.
We, no.
There's two more.
We had Derek Stresian left.
Satrian.
Satrian. And Chris left. But I believe there were two more people who put into those positions. So I think we're going to be okay by January.
Just curious, thanks.
Any other comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
I think Councilman Messier had to leave. I don't know. I see all the stuff, so it is.
Appointment for the West Warwick Juvenile Hearing Board resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the West Warwick Juvenile Hearing Board for the town of West Warwick with a term to expire on 12/22.
Move the resolution?
I'll second.
Moving second, discussion?
I would move the name Jessica Rubery.
I'll second.
Move the name of Jess Rubery and second it. Discussion?
I'm excited. Jess comes to us with a lot of experience in law. She's worked for DCYF. She's, you know, done clerk work. She has fantastic disposition and excellent temperament. She's very level-headed. As a teacher for 25 years, I think that's the type of person that we want serving on the juvenile hearing board.
Any other discussion?
I would. We have two, two applications. One, one is a reappointment, one's a new appointment. Like I just said, as far as a reappointment goes, if that person still wants to be on a board, no matter what board it is, and there's no issues, you know, as long as everything is fine, I don't see changing that. And in the other case, we, I just received yesterday, I think we all received it, a recommendation from, from Major Knott, and then today, one from Captain McConaughey, to higher-ups in the Police Department. So I don't know how we can't reconsider.
Well, one of the things that I did was I also reached out to the police officer who runs these meetings. And he thought it'd be a great asset to have an attorney on that board. And that's what sold me on it. And I got both letter recommendations, but I, again, when you say problems, what do you consider problems or concerns? I don't want to get into my concerns right now publicly. If I could share with that individual if they want to know my concerns. But I think Councilman D'Amico said it best. I think it's also great to have an attorney in that role. And not too often do we have that caliber of application come our way.
Right, but I think it's, I mean, if we, if we had a doctor come our way for this board, a surgeon, who, esteemed surgeon, I still wouldn't, if they don't deal with this on a regular basis-
They did. They were also, they became, they went through DCYF. They, we have a person who works at DCYF on that board. We had somebody do their internship at DCYF and is now an attorney who can give legal advice and anything to that matter on that board. And she's actually here right now, if you want to-
I'm just going to correct you. It's not DCYF that I was with.
I'm sorry.
It's the Quarter Point Special Act Office.
Okay. Which is the same, same caliber of what the individual-
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
And Jess, Jess came to me about a year ago and asked me, this is one board that she always wanted to serve on. And again, I think being an attorney, I think it's got plenty of legal experience. And I think it'd be a great asset to the community. Any other comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Three to one. Welcome aboard, Jess. Thank you.
Reports, town managers' report.
Yes, good evening. Two items tonight. Some of you may remember the town of Johnston, and I believe it was 2011, decided to stop paying for the electricity for streetlights on state roads. And that process developed into litigation, which was, you know, ongoing, but really nothing much happening. Recently, in November, the town of Johnston and National Grid reached a settlement where Johnston would pay the funds for their state road, uh, streetlights to narrow against the grid. They had placed those in a restricted fund. And going forward in November, they would not be paying any cost for street lighting on state roads. Now, so now clearly, you know, we'll be looking at that as all, all other cities and towns with state roads within their borders. Now, town of West Warwick, we own our streetlights. So we own them, but now we will see how this moves forward, whether or not we will have a reduction in our electricity bills for street lighting because of what has happened. So the national, the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns is following this, as well as the individual, the company Prism that we have manages our street lighting, looking at this and potentially a precedent for other communities that can look to not pay for street lighting on state roads. So this is, this is a, stay tuned for future events. But this may be encouraging that we may be able to save some funds. Now, Johnston isn't paying it, so it's going to be either Rydot or National Grid's going to pay for it. So again, it remains to be seen who's going to pay for that. But if Rydot does, then why don't they do that for every city and town? So potentially, there could be some savings for the town. And speaking of street lighting, we had a discussion a few months ago about the ability to dim streetlights on a townwide basis. And at that point, we have, the streetlights are connected with the equipment that allows that. But there were, there was a spot in town, northwest part of the town, that needed an additional gateway or point of contact. So our, our agente and Prism were looking, and they found a site at the elementary school on the north end, the Wakefield Elementary. And that looks like could be a great place for this point of access or gateway. So it's been tested, and it believes that will work. So now that will be in the process of working with the company that does that. But it looks like we will, we are moving forward with the ability to have the town haul the streetlights on a major program where from a computer, sections can be dimmed, individual streetlights can be dimmed. So it does provide potential for, again, lowering electricity bills if there are some areas that can be reduced in street lighting at certain times of night. It can be done by program. So again, that will give us more, a full capability of the service that was started a number of years ago. And again, potentially save funds by dimming lights that aren't needed in certain areas. So we look forward to that project coming to fruition, and that's my report.
Any questions for the manager? Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Maintenance report.
Good evening. Current year tax collections to date are $31,998,650, which is 50.65% of the levy. Given we've gone through two quarters of collections, we are right on target. And we are also back to full staff in the tax collection office. We were down someone for about a month. Overall, revenues and expenditures are trending, revenues are trending above where they should be, and expenditures are trending below. So right now, we are looking pretty good. I received a draft of the audit yesterday, and I've already reviewed it. I have some questions for the auditors. There's some reporting I do in the front. I've completed that. Going to get that back to them. I have received almost all of the budgets, and I'm working on updating the budget document. It's almost done. I will be off 12/21 through January 1st, as my daughter's having surgery. But I will be able to be reached if anyone needs me.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? Good luck.
Thanks. Budget document.
The calendar?
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
I did not. It seems pretty cut and dried.
Yeah. You'll have the availability of the budget much earlier than last year. We're way ahead of where we were last year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Discussion action. The return of conference room directly behind council chambers from council control back to the administration and staff for utilization of town business. Board of town business.
So I didn't get a chance to speak to John. I was actually in town hall earlier this week. I met with the maintenance guy, Paula, Mary Ann. There's a lot of clutter back there, and I totally agree with you. Some of the stuff was the old camera system that Councilman Giroux said. So what they're going to do is they're going to schedule John Patello and everybody to come over, take a look at what salvage bowl, what we could sell. There's monitors even downstairs and stuff. So they're going to utilize, clean up that room. They're going to hang the old cabinet that has the whiteboard up on the wall in there so we could use it. And that way there, if we have meetings during the day or whatever, we'll, so we'll be able to utilize that room once again. So just give them a couple of weeks, and they'll get it squared away. Any questions on that? And again, a lot of it was clutter that Councilman Giroux actually put back there and told not to get rid of it. But now it's been four years, and it's still sitting back there doing nothing.
And space is, is that premium in the town hall, and we should be utilizing it.
And the other thing they're going to look at is, we have a, we're trying to give the employees more of a break room. So they're looking at trying to, I mean, right now, they, they do go back there, but we're looking at more organized space than they'll sit.
All right. Is that it? Any other comment?
I apologize for not talking to you about that.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Appeals Board, one alternate member with a term to expire 10/2021. Juvenile hearing board, hearing board, one term to expire, no, we killed it. The 12/2018 Pension Board Committee, Pension Board, one term to expire 11/18/2020. One term to expire 11/18/19. Technology Committee, Ward 1, one term to expire 12/31/18. Ward 2, term to expire 12/31/18. Ward 3, term to expire 12/31/18. Ward 4, term to expire 12/31/18. And Ward 5, term to expire 12/31/18. Public comment, comments will only be addressed to the town council. We'll take them under advisement. When addressing the town council, please state your name and address. Please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens assessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body but heard as requested.
Any questions from the council first?
Good evening, everyone. Two quick points. Number one, I, I think I witnessed probably one of the craziest things tonight, what happened to Mr. Oates. I've got to know Tom over the last year and a half. I think the election just happened. Four out of five council members remained in their seats, which tells me that the people of West Warwick were not voting for change. So to vote someone out, and I have no dispute that the young lady that got appointed is more than qualified and will offer amazing guidance. But, I mean, Mr. Lichardi asked under the Technology Committee, if there's nothing wrong, why are we voting to change? And Councilman D'Amico said, I agree with you 100% in so many words.
I did not say 100%. That's fine.
I believe that-
There was three applicants for that position. It was three positions filled. There was no more than, there was three positions for the Technology Committee. So we had really no choice. It was a three reappointment for the juvenile hearing board.
Oh, I understand.
There was one appointment, two people, and we chose that.
And I, and your decision is made, and so be it. The second point is, and I know it's public comment, but I'm just raising it to the council. I know a while back, I presented before the council the issues down at 4143 Industrial Lane relative to the building issues. And it's been, it's been investigated by Ernie and talked about. I know that the town has a new building official, and I'm just wondering if the recommendations of the town manager have been addressed and if the council could look into that to handle any of the problems and remedies that were down there. And that's all I have to say. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. This is Pika Trail 25 No Wiki Street. Seems how Councilman Messier had an emergency, I would assume. I'll address one, one thing, and then after the meeting, I'll address with the town manager. As far as the construction goes, they removed a stop sign, which, David, you know where I live, on the corner. As far as the construction goes, they removed the stop sign, which, David, you know where I live, on the corner. I, I, I hope that, or could somebody put that up immediately? I watched two kids almost get struck by a vehicle today. So the cars coming from the Wiki Street, whether they're either going left onto West or right onto West, they're not allowing these kids to cross the street, they're just going right through. With the stop sign there, previously, they would stop. I know that the road is, it has the binder before the original asphalt is put on in the spring. I don't know if they can go into that. Or there's a telephone pole directly across the street, which they can put that stop sign on to make these cars stop. It's, somebody's gonna get hit. And I, I put it on, I talked about this before, behind me on West Street, Major Knott. Some, some call it a continuation. It goes down to the dead end, if you're familiar with what I'm talking about. It goes around that shop corner. You can ask your detail officers, I spoke with them several times out there during the construction period, and they fly around there. So would it be something to look into, to put one there as well, to stop those? I've watched your officers almost get hit themselves by the cars flying around the corner.
You can send it to the traffic committee.
I was just gonna say, that would have to go to the traffic-
I know I went there before, but I mean-
And he's got your note, and he can give that over to DPW for the stop sign.
Okay, and I have some other stuff that I'll speak with him, because Jay's, I brought stuff up to Jay, but whatever happened, happened.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen, Tom, and ladies, Tom Oates Colonial Way. I have a, Mr. Lichardi had made a mention, people that were looking for reappointment should be reappointed unless there's an issue. Councilman D'Amico agreed to that. I'm just, excuse me, you agree, you agree, you agree? I'm not being rude, no, no.
I didn't, I didn't.
Your turn. Okay, then let me finish. Councilman D'Amico agreed with that. I'm just curious, I know this is political, because I did not, David, it's political because I did not support you or Mr. Messier in the election, and in the last two weeks-
You want my answers? I can give you answers right now if you want, but I told you I'd tell you in private, but I don't think you, I think you want to hear them in private.
Oh, I do.
I think you would, I don't want to embarrass you in public, I really don't-
So you have something to embarrass me with?
No.
Perfect, and we're gonna wait, we're all gonna wait till after the meeting? Excuse me, excuse me. We'll wait till after the meeting is finished, and it's off the record, then the five of us can sit here and discuss it, because Mr. Messy is not here.
Well, we honestly can't discuss it like that, because it'd be an open court, it'd be a violation. You can have a discussion with me if you'd like.
Oh, we, we will, we will have a discussion immediately after this meeting. However, on the appointment of Jess, she is a wonderful young lady, I've known her for a very long time. She and her husband worked with my wife at Home Depot, I think he calls her Ma, because she, my wife is such a sweetheart. We know them very well, she's gonna be a wonderful asset to that committee. She's just a sweet young lady, and I wish her the best of luck with it.
Thank you, Mr. Oates.
Thank you.
John Reed, sixty-two Inews Avenue. I'm not so much concerned what happened with Tom tonight, but I am really embarrassed for the chief. When this council does not go by the recommendations of a chief, there's a political problem here. But I feel bad for him, he is supposed to be in charge of this. These people, the advocates work with him, and if that's his recommendation and you don't take it, I think a bit of justice would be out here.
Thank you. Last comment?
Alan Plaza, five Robin Lane. I'm just asking for clarification here. I look at upcoming appointments, and I see three listed. The one that is confusing to me is juvenile hearing board. You just appointed somebody to a board that, and the position expires in-
Twelve twenty eighteen?
On thirty-one, in, what is it, twenty-one days?
No, it's twelve, it doesn't say twelve thirty-one, it says twelve.
It says twelve twenty eighteen.
That doesn't mean twelve one twenty eighteen or twelve thirty one eighteen.
My point being that-
It was advertised three times, Alan, and we appointed somebody.
You appointed someone to a position that's gonna expire the end of this month? It says twenty eighteen. We're in twenty eighteen.
Does it mean twelve one or twelve thirty one? Could be twelve eighteen. She hasn't been sworn in yet, she starts to be sworn in. When do you meet, Mr. Knott, Chief Knott?
I'm not sure when they're next scheduled, when is juvenile holidays?
No, but maybe Mr. D'Amico can clarify for me, because I see ones, they're expiring in twenty twenty-one, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, but I've got one that expires in twenty eighteen. That's twenty-one days from now.
It expires.
I believe that Mr. Oates holds that position until then.
All right, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, same thing with the technology, same thing with the technology group, if you notice, they all expire twelve, twelve-
I'm not even sure if they're meeting this month, so if they don't even meet this month, it's... So there's no other meeting this month though, Mr. Oates, right?
It was last week.
You meet once a month?
Yes.
So here we go into January, Jess will be in place.
Okay, I was just, because I see the other ones, and they're reappointments to positions that are, they're already occupying, but you're just extending them? It's, to me, it's English, but I don't know, John can clarify it.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I just want to wish everybody safe and happy holidays, enjoy Christmas, New Years, and God bless. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, she seconded. Thank you.